Six o'clock, Thursday, June 25, 2015. We're in the steering room of the community center. It's a time, date, and place for the scheduled joint meeting on the Carson City School District Board of Trustees and the Carson City Board of Supervisors. First item, we'll talk about rule call. So, I'll call the trustees' role. Trustee Green.
Here.
Trustee Wilkie.
Here.
Trustee Crossman. Trustee Reynolds.
Here.
Trustee Cassioppo.
Here.
Trustee Contine. And Trustee Sorezic.
Okay, and on the Board of Supervisors, let the record reflect that we're joined tonight with the entire Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Shirk, Supervisor Bonkowski, and Supervisor Aboud.
And we'll now go to the first agenda item, and that's a flag salute led by Mayor Cole. Agenda item number two, and that's the adoption of the agenda as submitted. I'll go to the Board of Trustees. Entertainer motion?
I motion that we accept the agenda presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any public comment regarding the agenda? If not, Board of Trustees, all in favor?
Aye.
Supervisors.
Go ahead.
I think, four supervisors.
Aye.
Aye. Passed.
Okay, we'll now have welcoming remarks, and we'll begin with Joe Cassioppo. He's the Vice President of the Carson City School District's Board of Trustees. Joe?
Thanks, Ron. I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. Of course, thanks to the school board and thanks to Mayor Cole and the Board of Supervisors. I think we've now had enough of these meetings to where we can start calling them a series of meetings. And it's exciting getting the city together with the school board to discuss the issues we have in Carson City. We, I think everybody's doing some good work, and it's nice to get together to chat about it and get updated on some of the ongoing work that we're doing here in the, in the community. The school district, like everybody else, has been working hard to balance budgets and, you know, do more with what we're given. And we're making some really good strides. We've had some good meetings. Everything from, you know, the Race to the Top grant that we've received, that we've been working with, has really helped us look at our programs and make improvements where they needed improvements, and just make those tweaks to make sure we're doing for the, the students in our community what, what we all want to do for them, and that's give them a state-of-the-art education. And to do that, you know, we can't do it alone, like they say, it takes a village. We, we need the Board of Supervisors, we need to cooperate with them and the community. And the community has really stepped up. I mean, we have, you know, one of our, in our strategic plan, we talk about, among other things, community partnerships, and the community has really stepped up, and we've developed a fantastic amount of partnerships. The, everybody from parents to, you know, the business community, the, you know, the school district itself, and just all the members in and out of the community have really stepped up and, and helped our students out. They've given them more opportunities, they've gave them, you know, maybe a reason to look at succeeding beyond high school and what they can do. And I just want to thank everybody here and everybody who's listening. Thanks for all your efforts, and please continue to help us out. And with the help of the, you know, the Board of Supervisors and the cooperation that we're, we're all a part of now, I think we just keep moving forward, and it's an exciting time to be involved in Carson City. So, welcome tonight, and thank you, everybody.
Mayor?
I can't say it any better than what Joe just said. I think he hit on everything that I was going to say tonight, but I'll just remark generally here. You know, this last legislative session was kind of the education session. There were some things done that hopefully are going to move the education ball forward. But I think what you see here in Carson City is an entire community coming together for the education of our students, of our children, and also developing the workforce skills that will enable them to participate in a job market that is ever-changing in this, these day and age. I mean, the unemployment rate's dropping down, but I don't think it's any secret to say that, you know, there are jobs that are going unfilled. I just read one on CNBC this morning, there are jobs that are going unfilled because we don't have qualified people to fill those jobs. Well, in Carson City, we're doing something about that. And I think when you look at here tonight, you see the, the school board and the Board of Supervisors making sure that our strategic plans are compatible and all moving down the same path. And perhaps even more importantly, you see the presence of the Western Nevada College. Mr. Burton's here, you see the presence of the manufacturing, Mr. Jackson's here, Mr. Ray Bacon for the Manufacturing Association, the Adams Hub, the Entrepreneur Center, the Library. All of these have a piece of the, of the puzzle in the education and development of a skilled workforce for those who reside in our community and those in the surrounding region. So, I'd like to join Mr. Cassioppo in saying thank you for being here tonight. I look forward, and I know our entire board looks forward to listening and participating and seeing what's happened over the last six months, and just being more educated about it and what we can do to move that ball forward. So, again, and thanks, thanks to the school board for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going on to your agenda, item number four, which is, this is the time for public comment. Anyone may come forward, discuss any item that is relevant or under the authority of the respective boards. So, at this time, any, any public comment? Case seen, done. Discussion and year-end summary of activities in the Carson City Library Digitarium to include use in the future, and Molly, you're on.
Good evening. Molly Walt for the record. Good to see everyone, hi. Hello. So, yes, I am here to talk about the Digitarium at the Carson City Library. It was about a year ago at this time that I was painting the stage green. And so, we do have a green screen, and everything that the students needed to make movies, advertisements, it's been very, very exciting. So, for those of you who haven't been to the Digitarium, I'm going to take you through just a little bit of what the Digitarium is, and then what we see where the Digitarium is going to go after the grant ends June 30th. So, right now, the equipment that we have in the Digitarium, and this can all be checked out with a Premier Library card, and it's open, the Digitarium is open for, to 14 through 17-year-olds. So, we have 19 MacBook Pros. With that comes a Microsoft Office, Adobe Premiere, Photoshop Elements, and iMovie. iMovie was the most popular, popular, what was used on the MacBook Pros this year. High-speed internet throughout the whole Digitarium and Wi-Fi. We have video cameras, projectors, iPads, Canon cameras, poster printing, sound booth, as you can see, that is our picture of the sound booth we have in there, and then the green screen that I mentioned before. The stage that was in the library now is a green screen. So, it's very exciting. So, the functions that we use the Digitarium for, during the 2014-15 school year, which is the grant that I was on, and that grant specifically was for freshmen, for the high school freshmen, and so that's who I worked with. And there were two goals that were to be addressed on this grant. One of the goals were to have the students create a multimedia project. And then the other goal was, and we'll get into that, was the e-portfolios, which I think is extremely exciting as well. So, with that, the project that then I developed in the summer and presented to the high school freshman transition teachers was for them to create a PSA, a Public Service Announcement, which I'll go into as well. I think most of you have already heard about that as well, so. But the Digitarium was for, my position was funded through the LSTA grant, and then the space is for high school students, 14 through 17. And then also, it would be open to secondary school teachers in their classes. Okay? And then the other goal that was to be met from the goal, from the grant, I'm sorry, was the student digital portfolios. And that, my assistance then to them was to provide out-of-school-time technology assistance for that. All right, so the Public Service Announcement, how that all came about is, presented that to the teachers in August, the lesson plan that I had created. And so, for the lessons one through four, I brought those lessons to the high school, and I taught those lessons to all of the freshman transition students and their library. And then lessons five through eight, they brought the students to the library during, whether it would be during school time or then after school as well. And then, and that's where they created it. So, during the months of October, November, and December, and I tell you, it was insane. But there was a total of 1,287 visits to the Digitarium from high school freshmen throughout that, those three months. Yeah, a few times I thought we might have reached our fire code, but we didn't. It was really, you know, the thing is, and as you can see how busy it was, the picture that you see in front of you was taken as the students were walking from the high school to the library during the school day, you know, which makes it really, really accessible for the high school as well, because it is walking distance. And then the, the one beneath that is after school, and that's how, you know, busy it got during, during those months as well. So, then what ended as a final project to that is, and I believe we brought this to you the last time, is we did the Public Service Announcements. Those were on, the subject area had to be one of the learning targets from the freshman transition class. And then we had a panel of five judges. They picked the top two, and then those top two PSAs were ran at the Galaxy Theater. And we got that time donated, which we were grateful to get. And so, for one month, one group had theirs running, and then for a second month, but it ended up to be like two and a half to three months, they had their PSA running as well. And I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to see them, but they were really, really, they were great and, and well-created. So, and this is a picture that was in the paper of the top two PSA's winners there. Okay? Now, the digital portfolios is where, that came in a little bit later throughout the year. The school district rolled that out, I believe, in October. October, November is when they rolled it out, and that was another part of the grant, the goal of, in which the grant, we were supposed to help with. I know the school board has been given, you know, what career cruising is, but for the Board of Supervisors, this right here is where this meets your strategic plan. Because what career cruising is, is it is a program, a planning program that helps the students achieve their potentials in school, career, and life. What it does is they go on and they answer, I believe it's about 161 questions, on, you know, what, what interests they have. And they start this, by the way, in the sixth, sixth grade into 12th grade. And then it gives them, you know, choices of, of a profession, of what they might be interested in doing, you know, later on in life, through the interests that they have at that time. And they can change throughout the year as well, or years, I should say. And then what they do is then they start building their portfolio. They start writing a resume. They can, in their journal, they can start writing down all the volunteer hours that they've done, all of their work experience. It is also then linked into Power School, so all of their grades are uploaded into their portfolio. Then teachers then can also have specific assignments that they want uploaded into their portfolio, which the PSA was one of their specific assignments that they needed uploaded. And as you can see through this, it's not a very good picture, but 622 out of 551, I know that sounds odd, but I'll explain, were uploaded into there. Because what happened was, all of their PSAs, everybody who participated in the PSA first semester, it was uploaded into their, their assignments. And then second semester, freshman transition class turns into a health class. And some of those teachers, for their health final, required that the students do another Public Service Announcement in something health-related. So, some of those students came into the Digitarium, again, made another Public Service Announcement, and then uploaded it into their assignments. So, it gave two assignments, so it was marked down as two out of the specific assignments that they wanted. So, it's like highlighted assignments that you want in there. So, obviously, their senior projects would be going in there, and, and, you know, different things that the kids might be working on. Also then, when, under extracurricular activities, that's all within your portfolio as well. And this summer, a few students have been coming into the Digitarium, and they've got themselves videoed doing football and another one dancing. So, then we've downloaded that, and we put that into their extracurricular activities. So, then when a college wants to see who they are, they just have to literally give them their e-portfolio, and they see everything. They can see the pictures, the videos. This is something that is really, as a parent, I commend the school district for doing this, because it is something that is really going to help those who want to, in, in college, career-wise or whatever, to sell themselves. And they start, like I said, they start documenting what they're doing in the sixth grade. The other thing is answering those questions. A lot of middle schoolers, you know, and I have two, they're not really sure what it is, what do I want to go into, what, you know, what interests do I have? And by taking that 161-question quiz, or, you know, assessment, they did. I now have two kids that are very goal-oriented, they know what they want to be, and it, that is very exciting as a parent, to know that your children have goals, so, yes. So, that is, that was the first semester, is what we really keyed in on. Second semester, the library then wrote an amendment to the grant that let me expand a little bit of what I do, and it opened up more opportunities. So, beyond the freshmen, I was able to work with seniors and help them finish final touches on their senior projects. I was able to go to the high school and explain to the business classes what resources that the library has that would help them with the Shark Tank, the National History Day projects. We've been, this is like our third year that the library's really been involved with Nicole Fagundis's history class, and so we were very involved with that this year. We brought, you know, we had more technology for the kids. In fact, that one parent was going to text me on how well their kids did, but I believe Nicole Fagundis's class brought five different groups to Washington DC that they made nationals. So, they were competing last week, and, but I have not heard how well that they did. And then, one, we then met, I met with the school district as well, and one of their needs that they, that they thought that the library would be able to help with was parent engagement nights. And so, what we did then is I started conducting parent engagement nights every other Tuesday, and what we did then is I explained what the pillar applications and the digital resources that the school district has on their website, and explained that to parents as well on everything that goes along with that. And so, the, the Edmodo, the Power School, what is it, the Career Cruising, Mastery Connect, all of those are the pillar applications, and most importantly was the Google Drive. That was very, I can't say, I mean, it wasn't like as popular, at each time, we've got more and more parents to come. However, they wanted more and more on Google Drive, because the school district is going more towards that. And so, the, the information is, please don't stop, please don't stop, continue doing these parent engagement nights. So, we will continue and be able to jumpstart it right at the beginning of the school year, is what our goal is to do there. And then the digital resources that the school district has built on their website for parents and for students as well. So, we were able to do that second semester. We also did, we conducted, in, in partnership with the high school, were the student-led conferences. And so, as you can see, 115 students attended conferences at the high school, and 149 were conducted at the Digitarium. So, the Digitarium was, it was well-received. It was well-received for that as well, and I do know, working with Alan, that is something that we'll continue to do in the Digitarium as well. So, all right, so what does the future of the Digitarium have in store? Outreach, outreach, and more outreach is what we're going to continue to do. We will continue to do the digital literacy-based projects. However, now, we will be able to expand that to middle schools and elementary schools as well. And so, it will be me going in at the beginning of the school year, being able to present all of what we did and showcase, you know, with the, the ones that the kid, the students have already made, to the different schools as well. We'll be able to jumpstart that at the beginning of the school year and expand that to elementary and middle schools. We will continue the parent engagement nights, like I said, and really focus on the ones that the parents want as well. And we talked about doing a survey, sending that out as well, so we can do that. And then, we will have, continue to do with that would be the digital resources that the library has as well, and those are listed on the library website. However, I think it's bringing people to those websites and really kind of explaining, this is what they are, and walking them through that. You know, you see, you see kind of a logo, and it's like, oh yeah, that looks cute. And then, you know, not really going in and expanding into that, and we'll continue to do that as well. Because the, with the digital resources that the school district has on their website, which are free, and then the ones that the library has on their website, in all honesty, is, it is so much information at your fingertips. I have my kids doing Mango Languages, so in the summer, they are learning Spanish for free, which is very exciting as well. And then they, another one that is on there is, on the school district, one is on science experiments, and it takes you through a virtual science experiment. It's really exciting. So, but again, I would not know that unless I was driven to go for my job to go see this, you know, then, you know, so it's bringing up to the parents, and that's where we're going to go with that as well. And just really try to market it, make it out there, and just outreach, outreach, outreach. And then we will continue with the e-portfolios, because I do think this is something, you know, as the students do it in class, but they don't necessarily, you know, bring it home and let their parents know how valuable this program really is. So, we're going to do more outreach with that as well, and to continue kids looking towards, you know, the future as well. We will then go, jumpstart with the senior projects at the beginning of the school year. With the grant, my hands were really tied on who I could service at that time, and it was the freshmen. And so, it wasn't until second semester, and in all honesty, it's that first semester where the senior projects are really, you know, keyed in on, that's when they, you know, write in their proposal, it's accepted. And so, I will be a part of that. So, then all of the students know that, hey, when school is shut down, you know, when it closes at 2:5 here, come to the library, because we have all those resources as well. National History Day, we will continue to do and support that as well, because we've been, it's been very well-received, and we do do a lot with that. With the Shark Tank, we will be able to then again, present to the business classes and, you know, help just prep for the Shark Tank, because we do have digital resources at the library on the website that I was able to bring to them second semester, but it might have been a little bit too late, you know, because they had already started their business plan. And so, this way, we'll be able to, to do that right away as well. And then we had talked to the school district as well with getting Carson High School interns. And so, what this would be then is to have students teach them how, you know, the, the digital natives they are, to be able to instruct non-digital natives. And that's what we would like to be able to see as well. Because with the grant, I was able to kind of alter my day, you know, and some days it was, you know, maybe a longer day, and then, and so, when you have this Digitarium and you have the schools coming in at eight in the morning, and then you have it open until late at night, you kind of need two or three people, you know, in there just really working and being able to reach everybody in the community. So, this is something that will be exciting, because, and then they'll be able to get some, you know, hours as well, and so I think it's a very good thing as well. And then we will do, this is something that I really wanted to touch in on, is resume writing. It is in career cruising, and it does kind of walk you through it, and so the kids would have it in their e-portfolios, but then making the paper copy. And job searching skills. I think it's very important that, you know, we'll be able to work with them on how to search for jobs and how to present yourself for a job as well. And so, I think that would be, is going to be exciting as well. And then, you know, Sina will speak to this on the third item as well, about what we can do with WNC. So, what we would like to do is, I know, you know, the Digitarium, we've talked about is for like the high school kids, but however, we would like to be able to do some outreach with the freshmen as well, and bring myself or one up to the college to kind of see how we can help with Emily's class and, and stuff too, and getting them there as well. And then teen events, that is something that, that they want to do. So, it's different little things, like they want to do, you know, karaoke, selfie contests, you know, just some different, different, different things outside of what you think the library is, because it really is, the Digitarium really is their space. And, you know, and it was, it was interesting, we had a focus group, and, you know, one of the comments was, you know, they love to sing, and they would love to be able to do karaoke, but someplace where there wasn't alcohol being served. Like, well, that would be the library. That would be the library. So, so we'll, you know, continue to do that, and they want to do like a Vine contest. That one I'm going to have to research to see what exactly that, you know, that would entail. But, you know, they had some really interesting ideas, and so we want to be able to bring that as well, because, you know, there really isn't a space, places for them to go, and so I think this really can make it, you know, fun for them as well outside, so. And that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions of me? It's been a very exciting year, so.
I have a question.
Yes?
Molly, the student digital portfolio and the quiz that the kids take.
Or assessment, I would say, yes.
Assessment. Is there any connection with counseling at the school to help keep the kids on track such that they're... such that they're teaching classes?
Yes. Because like you see, I'm going to just show you, go back to this as well. Because it was the counselors that actually bring this to the teachers. And as you can see, it's added by Nikki Hendy, who is one of the counselors at the high school. And so she has access to all of their accounts. And so yes, there, this is something that is, it's being pushed actually by the counselors and different things. And so she adds assignments to their, to their individual portfolio and then asks the teacher saying, okay, we want this assignment. So to get the PSA uploaded to each and every one of them, Nikki, the counselor, added it and said, okay, have them do this. So it is, and if I'm missing something, you guys can jump in. But that's who brought it too, is the counselors. Yeah. Mm-hmm. So it's very exciting.
Jill?
Molly, it's exciting. I haven't had a chance to really go down there, but I'd like to.
You should.
Well, I promise.
You should bring your daughters.
But that, yeah, I will. But, but that leads me into when we talk about parent engagement, for any number of reasons, getting parents involved and getting them engaged is a challenging thing to do. Everything from work to interest to all that. What have you seen and what kind of average turnout do you have with the parents and how do you see us generating more, getting more parents?
Okay, I can tell you what they suggested. You know, because the parents that are coming are the ones that are involved in their, their kid's life. And so they suggested, so, well, I'll start with what we did. What myself and the school district did is I created a flyer, they sent it out via email. And then that was shot out at 3:30 the day of. You know, so it was like shot out, I think maybe a week before and then 3:30. So the parents suggested that, you know, maybe a reminder, reminder, and then the biggest thing is the phones. So we need to be able to use the phone, you know, the automated, the phone to call them. And so that was something that was suggested as well because most of them do it. And then the text messaging was suggested as well. And then I do, we, because we can have it in Spanish as well. And so we'll work on that in getting it, the advertisement done in Spanish as well. Because we did, on the last one, we did have a family that was Spanish speaking and then the daughter translated. So I, it was very exciting. Well, you know, here I am, the age that I am, and I have a nine-year-old teaching with me because she, I would be speaking. And then she just translated it right here and she was so comfortable in front of all these parents. It was great. So, you know, that is something that we learned as well. So I'm not going to tell you the average. I'm just going to let you know that it doubled each time we did it.
Okay.
Yes. So that was great because it did. And it's just a word of mouth and word of mouth. And, oh, the other thing that they commented on is the flyer had all of the, you know, pillar applications, logos, it said everything. And then it also had the digital resources. But each night, I just keyed in on two. It was a two-hour present, you know, two-hour presentation. And so I spent one hour on Google Drive, one hour on Career Cruising. And so that was misleading. So we learned. And then we'll take that on saying, okay, this night, we will be just doing the two of them. And another thing that we learned is that they have to have their, their students log in. Because they lived vicariously through me and yet it would have been nice that they had their logins. So we'll put that out there as well as if you are going to attend, please make sure that you have your students login. Yeah. So, because for Career Cruising, they don't. You, as a parent, you can have your own parent Power School account, but for Career Cruising, you can't. And so Google Drive, you can't either. You need their login. Yeah. So that, that's something that we'll do. And we took, we wrote all that down and we will learn from that and hopefully grow it. Because it is something, it is something that is really, really needed, I think, in the school district is getting the parents more involved. And we'll attend PTA meetings, you know, and really try to advertise it that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stacy?
First of all, I'd like to thank you and your staff because it's an amazing job that you guys have done. And every time I go by the digitatorium, it's full.
Thank you.
The other thing I think that should be noted is we've had, because of Mastery and Connect, but I think also because of the work that you've done, we had more kids grad, or complete English and algebra and math, which are the two prebords that we've been watching to make sure that we're not losing anybody at the very beginning. So I just wanted to congratulate you because I think you've been part of that too.
Well, thank you. Thanks. I have done some math tutoring.
Steve?
Can't get away from that. Yeah.
Yes. Molly, with all this good work, what's the, what is the real opportunity for growth, for more participation, given the current facilities and resources?
The opportunity is, like with the digital literacy base, now I'm able to really go into the elementary and middle school. There was, there was interest of elementary, and I know it's, it's hard. I, Boarder Wick and Mark Twain can walk there, you know, but the teachers want to be able to bring their kids during the day in there. Because we do have, you know, a lot of the presentations that the kids are doing are on Prezi or PowerPoint. And that is kind of becoming old-fashioned, you know, as much as, you know, here I am with a PowerPoint presentation, because it can be done in, you know, virtual iMovie and it can be done in the Adobe Premiere. And that's where they're going. And so I think with the liter, we were able to do that more during, during the day because I'm going to be able to work with not just high school freshmen. I'll be able to do elementary and middle schools as well. And then after school, we're hoping to be able to work with the school district some to, and we're, to get busing. Busing is needed. I mean, if you really, really want it to expand, you need busing. High school, they can walk there and they would stay until their parents could pick them up. And so that's easy enough. But even for some then, it was, you know, if they had an activity before 5:30, you know, and they could only give an hour or two, we really need busing. I, I, yeah. And that would be.
On the, on the slide where you talked about the, the student-led conferences, you enumerated there were 264 students. What separated those students that were, that participated in the library? How were they chosen or did they choose themselves?
It was the hours that they chose. Because the, the student-led conferences that were done at the high school were during the, like, workday. And then the ones at the library were being able to be offered. I believe we started like at four o'clock and we were able to, to do that until seven. And so it was, it, it opened the opportunity for, you know, rather than having to pay, you know, school district employees to stay late or however you would do that, I'm not quite sure. But it opened up the opportunity that we had the technology there to do it. Because the student-led conferences were technology-based. I mean, they're, everything that they presented to their parent was on the computer. So it was bringing them to their Career Cruising account and to their Google Drive's account. Everything was computer. And so having those hours outside the school day, I believe, is what really enticed the parents in the digitatorium.
One last thing, and it's not in relationship to the, to the students, but is there a, is there a relationship between the digitatorium and your resources and community access television much at this time? Seems like you've got, that there's some things that there'd be crossover in.
Okay. I'm not quite sure I understand. I'm sorry.
Well, with our community access television.
Your mic. I'm sorry.
With our community access television operation that we have here, is there much, is there much relationship between the library and that at this time?
Not at this time, but there are conversations being had, I believe. Yeah. Sina can maybe address it. Yes. Because there is communication.
Sina Lloyd, Library Director. There is, essentially, we see it not as competition, but as a bridge to kind of go on to more advanced tools to make these movies and different items. We don't have the technology that the Brewery Arts Center has.
Additional comments?
I've heard of rumor, rumors. Is the library getting a 3D printer?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Are you going to talk about?
I'm just like, how much do it?
Are you going to talk about that later? Okay. I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Yes. Which is exciting. Yeah. There, it really is. And I think, you know, in closing statements is, you know, this digitatorium in the library in all honesty is what brings both of your strategic plans together. It does. Everything that you, you know, have within your strategic plan, working with the city and the city, working with, you know, the school district and the education, it's all happening. And Ron says, no longer a library, but an innovative learning center. And that's where we're at.
That's exactly what I wanted to address.
And did you see? I highlighted that on my title page.
But just listening, you know, I was just taking some notes. And, and what you have provided is a, is a learning environment that encourages innovation and creativity by having students combine academic achievement with evolving technology and the power of imagination. Now, think about what our respective boards are here. Why would people want to stay in Carson City? Why would they want to come to Carson City? You are very much a part of why. Because with student achievement and success in life, innovation and creativity is one of the major drivers in today's world economy. You know, I say this in a, in the sense that as we move forward, we can't, the school district can't do it alone. We're, we're seeing that. But together, some really special things are happening for our kids. And at this time, I'd like to give a little acknowledgement to Mr. Nick Morano for having this even go forward. I know he, you know, met with Mr. Stokes and others, Sina, to say, we don't need just a warm body in there. We need somebody, namely you, that can lead this. No, that can work with teachers, that can work with the kids. And that innovation and creativity, bring that out and keep this thing moving forward into something even, even bigger. The other thing is, when you talk about busing, you know, we can get busing because the elementary schools and the middle schools should be part of this going forward. Everyone should have that opportunity to walk into the library, to come up with an idea, research, design and build using technology. It's all here and, and to move Carson City forward. So I just thank you very much for what you've done, Sina, and, and moving, moving this forward and keeping it in a true working partnership for the students.
Thank you. And it does, I mean, I'm not going to, you know, lesson, it, it takes the involvement of the teachers. You know, without that partnership with the teachers and, and making it work, it really wouldn't. So I commend, you know, the freshman transition teachers that worked with me and able to fulfill the grant that we did do. And the counselors that, you know, Carson High has, has been really, really great to work with. And it does help. I mean, it helps knowing 80% of who's up there. You know, that does help. But, you know, because then, but at the end of the day, it's like, oh, here comes Molly Walt, let's run the other way. You know, but no, it was good. It's been really, really good. So, but thank you for having me. Is there any more questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Let's try this again. Agenda item six, it's informational update on the Carson City School District Strategic Plan Goal One, Community in Full Partnership to Include Introduction of Community Partners That Have Initiated Educational Programs. Mr. Stokes, Maya?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the combined supervisors and Board of Trustees. It's our pleasure to be here this evening. Mr. Alan Goslin, whose name is represented on your agenda, is unfortunately not able to be here. He is tending to some family matters and so he sends his regrets. I send you mine for trying to be Alan tonight. He is a terrific, he's a terrific young man who has really done marvelous things for our programs and I just want to acknowledge him and the work that he's done. Our agenda topic tonight is to give the combined boards here some idea about some of the work that's been done with regard to our goal number one of Carson City School District's strategic plan. And of course, as you know, we have our strategic plan that is centered around what we believe to be some of the most critical concepts and ideas that are facing our community and certainly our schools. And so Alan put this slide together for me and I thought it was great. We believe that we're living in a, in a world that is just a mouse click away from exotic places and business, technology and information and truly power. And I thought that was a great photograph as we consider the hands that are living in our community, the hands that are coming to school every day and that will eventually replace us and do marvelous things. So without really a focus or an idea, which we now have as our strategic plan, we're able to move forward and really see some amazing things happen within our schools. So goal number one, if I could just share with you what that means to us. We state in our strategic plan that goal number one is the community in full partnership, which actively connects students with learning opportunities beyond the classroom. Pretty straightforward, but boy, is there a lot of work involved. We've been very fortunate to not only have the means that we can hire a full-time individual to help with this, but, but what makes it work is that people in Carson City want this partnership to actually happen. And as I'm looking around, many of you that have reached out and helped us in so many ways. And I, I'm a little worried to just start naming people and programs because I know I would leave someone out. But those that are here, the Greenhouse Project, what a marvelous experience that that represents. We've got Mr. Woodbury in the DA's office. We have, of course, the library, the city. How many communities and school districts can tout that some event like this is actually happening in their jurisdiction? We've got WNC, great partners, and we'll hear more from WNC tonight. And of course, some other special individuals who really embody this concept or this idea of a community in full partnership. So what are we expected to accomplish as a result of this idea that our community would be in full partnership? Our goals, our objectives are to provide students with the opportunities for extended school programming. We all have been to school. We all have studied reading and writing and social studies and science and math. But taking key individuals who have knowledge in business and industry and applying that core curriculum in our students' lives so they have a better understanding of what's available to them as adults, we've got to be able to provide that for them. And we have people in our community that is helping to accomplish that. Of course, we want to improve the academic performance of our children. I, I know that Mike Jackson has a great story. He talks about growing up with his dad who was a house painter, very honorable profession. It wasn't exactly Mike's cup of tea. And if it hadn't have been someone showing him that there were other ideas out there, something else that he could do, his, his life might be different today. We have children in our schools who don't have adult supervision to the extent that there's an interest in their lives of what they want to do. How can they take the knowledge, skills and abilities that they have innately, find something in the world that interests them and then move ahead in, in having a productive and a life that contributes to the betterment of our society? Allowing for hands-on application of skills, students that might be able to develop marketable skills and understand their part not only in school, but then how do they interact socially and in a civic manner? And of course, this, we're all interested in. Hopefully, all of this work results at some point in strengthening our economic development within our community and region. So with that bit of introduction, I think I'm going to turn the time next over to Maya McKenzie, who is our executive director of the Adams Hub. And she's going to talk to you about a really exciting program that has been extended to our high school students. And with that, Maya, I will turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya McKenzie. I'm actually the Chief Professional Officer of the Hop and May Adams Foundation. Rob would not want me to seal his title for Adams Hub. Thank you for having me tonight, both Supervisors and School Board members. I'm pleased to be here. This is our third time that we're presenting to this group, so I will try not to be repetitive, but we have some really exciting results to talk about tonight, so I'm pleased to be here. Also, Jeff Glass is on vacation, so he sends his regrets for not being here as well. Just very quickly, as I know, I believe most of you are aware, the Hop and May Adams Foundation, in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada, created what we call the New Entrepreneur Network, which we launched officially with the school district this spring semester. And it was very exciting, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about that. In addition to that, we, the foundation is very focused, is a Carson City-based charitable foundation. We're very focused on improving our community, and we see a lot of that can happen through initiatives in entrepreneurship, especially with our youth. So, we are so pleased to be partnered with the school district as well as the Boys and Girls Club. In addition to that, Mr. Stokes alluded to Adams Hub, which is our business incubator in downtown Carson City. We have some really amazing companies that are starting up in there. We actually should, we'll be announcing them very soon, but we have innovative software companies and technology companies that are getting their start in our building. And if we do our jobs right, they're going to graduate into our community and hire people in Carson City and improve our economy. We also are always working on new initiatives, and we are hoping to be working on one with the Greenhouse Project, in fact. Why did the foundation, with its goal of improving our community and making this a better place to live, work, and play, why did we focus on youth entrepreneurship? When we started talking with the Boys and Girls Club, we started, they approached us first and asked if they could start an entrepreneur club, so at their facility. We looked into it and started researching, what is the benefit of entrepreneurship starting with youth, with young children? And what we found is studies that show that people who have been trained in entrepreneurship, who have completed even one course in entrepreneurship, say, one semester in a school, they become inspired and engaged problem solvers. And this is not just for starting businesses, but it also makes them more valuable community members. When they see a problem, rather than sitting back and complaining, they are more likely to get involved and come up with an innovative solution and take charge and make something happen. So, we see a lot of value. The mayor wrote a great article that focused on entrepreneurship and what it can bring to a community in addition to jobs and companies. We also found that students who complete youth entrepreneurship programs in high school, it's usually just one program, typically 12-week program, they are more likely to complete high school, they're more likely to go on and complete college, and they will make more than 10% more money throughout their career than students who did not complete a 12-week program in high school. So, it's a really amazing statistic, and I'm hoping to prove that true here in Carson City as well. We're really working to create curious students who are impassioned and dedicated to helping things improve in our community. So, our new Entrepreneur Network is comprised of three legs of the stool, we call it. We have our new e-curriculum where mostly Jeff Glass goes into the classrooms and talks to the students and helps them understand the relevance of the subject matter that they're learning and what relevance it has to their futures. It's very interesting. He always has a little, his little bit. If you speak a lot, you start to have your little bits that you do each time you speak. And his is to, at the beginning of the class, ask the students to raise their hands if they understand what, say, if the class is history, what relevance history might have in their future, and if they believe that it does. And usually, maybe one or two students who are glancing at their teacher to make sure they're going to get points for raising their hand will understand the relevance of history in their future. Then Jeff will talk about history. He'll talk about what business people have done based on their understanding of what's happened historically and how they are changing the world, and it's from their understanding of history. At the end of the class, he will then say to students, how many of you now think that the history, or English, or math, has a relevance in your future? And almost always, 100% of the students will raise their hands. So, we're trying to bring value so students have a better understanding of what their coursework will have relevant wise in their future. Our new e-club, we launched our pilot program at the high school this spring, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about that in a minute. That was a really fun 14-week program. We also launched it, and I'll tell you more, at Pioneer High School and Carson City Juvenile Probation this spring. And then finally, our new e-business. We will be launching that in the fall, and we're going to be getting renovations on a building this summer, and I'll tell you about that in a minute as well. When we started this organization, Jeff Glass did an excellent job of going out and reaching out to potential partners and trying to get people to understand what our efforts were and see if they would be interested in becoming involved with our efforts. And right now, and we created an advisory committee, which, these are the logos of some of the members of the advisory committee. We also have quite a few other leaders in our community, both from the public sector and private sector. So, I'm catching up to myself because I did write myself a couple of notes. As I mentioned, we launched our first 14-week pilot program. Why we chose 14 weeks was based on a few, you know, some instincts that we're learning about. 14 weeks is probably a little long. We might take it down a little bit lower in the fall. We graduated, so 14, in the 14-week program, to be able to graduate, you needed to attend every single session. We did have two sessions a week, so, and they were on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, if you missed a Tuesday, you can make it up on a Thursday. 27 students graduated, and I don't know, I've heard several people say this, I don't know if this is truly accurate, but I was told this was the largest number of students to complete an after-school program outside of sports. So, several people have mentioned that to us. We also launched a program at Pioneer High School. It was a slightly, I have, I apologize, Jeff wasn't here for me to check my numbers against. I did get better numbers from Pioneer High School today. It was actually a six-week program for one hour a week, and we actually graduated nine students. So, those, all three of those numbers are incorrect, and I do apologize for that. This was a slightly different program. It was more life skills-based. It did have entrepreneurship in it, but it also focused more on life skills. We are also finishing up our first pilot program with Carson City Juvenile Probation, and we have students in there that will be graduating in July. One of the really exciting things in here is when students finish their probation, they don't need to keep coming to some of these programs. We have one young woman who finished probation five weeks ago. She still comes every week because she's getting so much value out of this program. So, as we, I mentioned, some of the, what we're focusing on is entrepreneurship. It can, entrepreneurship can be about businesses, starting businesses, being innovative, creating solutions to problems. It can also be about being a community or a social entrepreneur. Mother Teresa is an example of a social entrepreneur. People who are creating innovative solutions to helping community issues. We found, we had, in our 14 sessions, we talked a lot about different topics. We brought in a lot of different guest speakers, and we focused on things such as networking, customer service, and really helping to identify yourself as a student, understand your own identity, understand that you can be a critical thinker, and that you can be an innovative problem solver. Networking was, by and large, every student's favorite part of the program. We worked really hard to bring in a number of community leaders from both the public and private sector. This is just a partial list of the people who are in there. I think some of you will notice that your companies are mentioned in here, some people in the audience as well. The students absolutely loved the networking. They found it so amazing. They are in a time in their life where they're trying to figure out what they want to do with their lives, and meeting people from various industries, getting to know them, it empowered them. I'm going to give you a few quotes at the end of this presentation. The students loved it. I would tease with Jeff because when I would go in and talk to the students, I could see some of them were not really comfortable making eye contact. Jeff had been teaching them, you need to make eye contact when you talk to people. And you could see they would kind of be looking down, and they'd glance up and see that you're looking at them, their eyes would look like deer in headlights for a minute, then they'd start talking again. So, every week, they would work on some other part of learning, how to, what is small talk? How do you give small talk? How do you shake a hand properly? These kids live in a digital world. Their hands are, they're down looking at their phones all day long or on computers, and they are yearning to learn how to work out in this real world, and we just found this was absolutely fascinating. I was, I was happy to hear that there will hopefully be school buses available because what every single student said is, we want to go out to businesses, we want to see what people are doing. When I am in an office, what am I doing all day long for eight hours? And I'm sure there's a lot of solitaire going on sometimes, but they, these students are being asked to make career choices, and they want to see what a particular career really looks like. So, one of our goals is to figure out a way to help students get out to businesses next The other really important part of this, and again, I'm going to throw out a statistic that I have not verified, so forgive me if this is inaccurate, but I've heard that over 70% of Carson City youth are unemployed. They cannot find a paid work experience. And this is really important, that our young people get that first job experience. My first job experience was at Burger King. It was not the most exciting job in the world, but I learned so much there. It was a really important part of my work education. So, we need to work really hard to help our students get paid work experience. It's going to help them throughout their career. We also want our students to be, as an employee, also to be able to be innovative problem solvers, to learn, and through entrepreneurial training, they're going to think about issues they see in their workplace, and we're training them to come up with solutions. So, rather than, again, sitting back and complaining about how bad this job is, or why they're making so many mistakes, we're training our students, hopefully, to be willing to stand up and suggest a solution and then help to implement it. We are going to walk the walk. We are going to start a student-run coffee house. We have the architect drawing up the plans right now. It's going to be in the back end of our building. The front end is now Lake Tahoe Brewing Company. In the back, little quarter plus the patio, will become a student-run coffee house. We were, last time we were here, a few months ago, we were talking about doing a gourmet nut business. We still hope to do that, but we are entrepreneurs ourselves, and when we saw that there was a little 1,500 square feet available, and we decided to take advantage of it, which is what luck is all about, is knowing when to take advantage of an opportunity. So, we're going to start a student-run coffee house out of this building. Additionally, we have also hired a Carson High School student as an intern at Adams Hub and a Western Nevada College student as an intern, and they're both great employees for us. Other Carson City employers are also standing up and saying, we want to hire your new entrepreneur students, so please send them our way. One of the things to be aware of is our goal with the foundation is to be continually giving back to the community. So, our focus will be on creating great businesses that are profitable, that give kids great work experience, but also, we want to be able to pour those profits back into other youth initiatives. The Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada is a great partner. We will put money back into their program, but additionally, other youth initiatives. Penny Reynolds with the Culinary Program, she had her students come out and walk the potential coffee house. They gave us design ideas, menu ideas, and our plan is to have the students making a lot of these decisions on how this coffee house is going to shape out. Is this working? Everything's very preliminary. We just finished our first programs. But what we're finding, this first statement was amazing. These were anonymous surveys, and we asked the students some questions. They wrote down their answers, folded them up, stuck them in a box. We had no idea who wrote what, and they knew these weren't anonymous. But eight of the 27 students, or the 35 students in the program, said that New E was the best program they'd had in their life, in their life. It's not a very long life so far, but that's pretty impressive. 100% of the students who completed the survey, and mind you, not every student who was in the program was able to graduate. They did not complete their 14 weeks. So, even the students who were sitting there filling out the surveys, knowing they weren't graduating, were giving us these answers. 100% of the students who were returning in the fall, we had some seniors that are not coming back, but other ones returning, 100% said that they want to continue with New E in the fall. 100% of them said they would recommend New E to a friend, and they also, 100% said that they plan to apply entrepreneurial problem-solving skills to all aspects of their life. They understood we were talking about business, we were talking about personal, we were talking about social, and they understood that they can be successful in all of these areas. We did have, through the various businesses, we had come in and speak to these students. We had more than 20 paid job opportunities come from these employers, and there were six paid job offers that were extended to students in the New E Club. And I think, well, one person received two offers, so only five jobs were accepted. And then, as I said before, before, before we started the program and the first day of the club, we asked the students if they understood the value of school and what, if there was anything they were getting out of school that would have relevance in their future life. And less than 20% of the students said they saw any value in what they were learning right now. After the club, 100% of the students said they understand the value of school and its relevance in their future. So, I have some really great quotes. The students were able to fill in a few areas in the questionnaires, and you can read them there. But this last one, Nimra, you know, she said, in the New E Club, I have learned many things, but the one thing I will never forget is how to be confident. This young woman, when she started the program, she sat very quietly. She kept her head down, and as the program evolved, she would be one of the first people jumping out to meet the speakers, shaking their hands, making eye contact. And she said this was very powerful for her. She learned so much. So, what's next? We are going to be launching in two weeks our pilot program with the Boys and Girls Club. There are 24 students, high school and middle school students at the Boys and Girls Club who will be taking this program. We plan to expand what we're doing at the high school, as I mentioned before, the field trips and even more networking. The students want to meet as many business professionals, learn about what they're doing as they possibly can. I was one of the business professionals that spoke to the students, and I talked about a business failure I'd had, and the students loved hearing that. So, many people go in and speak to them, and they're so successful, and they have such amazing stories, and they've done such amazing things that these students sit back and think, that could never be me. So, when somebody comes in and tells them about failures, it makes them realize that we all make mistakes, we can all succeed beyond our mistakes. We will be launching pilot New E Clubs at Eagle Valley Middle School and Carson Middle School. And we are, we were approached by some of the Western Nevada College students. We've been talking with Dr. Bob Whitcomb about launching a New E Club at Western Nevada College in the fall. We'll continue with our program at Pioneer High School and Carson City Juvenile Probation. We're launching our business, and we will continue to pursue additional opportunities. So, as I had stated before, we are always looking to make significant change, and our plan is to do that, but we know that it's going to take time. We did this this semester with 27 students. The good news is that there were three students who will be finishing up their requirements this summer at the Boys and Girls Club. They're going to go there because they want to complete their, the program that they weren't able to complete in the spring. So, students are motivated, they're inspired, and we just need to understand that we need to keep working. It's going to take a while to make some significant change in our community, but we will be successful. The board is getting out. We have been approached by schools in Washoe County, Lion County, and Douglas County. They're hearing what we're doing here, and they're asking us if we can get involved in helping them do this in their schools as well. We tell them our focus is on Carson City. But the word is getting out that great things are happening in Carson City. If you want to learn more, you're always welcome to contact me. Jeff Glass is, I'm speaking for him tonight. He is the Executive Director of the New E Network, and he would welcome hearing from you, as do I. Does anyone have questions?
Questions, comments from respective board members?
Thank you. I'm thrilled that, you know, this is happening in our community.
It's exciting that everyone has welcomed us with open arms. We can't believe how enthused everyone has been. It's been an incredible experience.
Jill?
Yeah, Maya, thank you from me as well. I had a chance to be a part of the E Club in terms of, you know, on the panel they had, talking to the students about our experiences, and it was exciting. And some of these kids are amazing in their own right. I mean, one of the, one of the young ladies, you had a quote from up there. I didn't know her that well, except through my son and some of their friends, and then a few weeks later, we're
It's exciting that everyone has welcomed us with open arms. We can't believe how enthused everyone has been. It's been an incredible experience.
Jill?
Yeah, Maya, thank you from me as well. I had a chance to be a part of the E Club in terms of, you know, on the panel they had, talking to the students about our experiences. And it was exciting. And some of these kids are amazing in their own right. I mean, one of the, one of the young ladies, you had a quote from up there, "I didn't know her that well except through my son and some of their friends." And then a few weeks later, we're sitting there during high school awards night where you hear about all the scholarships and, and this girl was just racking them in. She's a go-getter already. I mean, we could learn probably more from her than she's learning from us in some aspects. But, you know, I remember when I was in college, we had a professor, I think it was a poli-sci class, and he made the comment, and I didn't understand it then, that we do a great job of teaching our students and breeding our students to, to take on tasks and solve problems that other people put their thoughts into. Somebody had a thought and we do a great job of taking that thought and running with it, but at the time, not such a good job of developing our own thoughts and, and figuring out how to run with their own thoughts. And, and you're helping and this whole club and network is helping develop these thoughts and getting people to think that, you know, their, their thoughts are important. And they have as much to offer as any one of us. And so I really think it's, it's a fantastic, you know, thing we're doing here. So I really commend you guys for, for doing this and I certainly want to keep you in a part of it.
Oh, thank you.
Maya, I was particularly impressed with your comment that the kids were learning how to make eye contact and how to shake a hand. I mean, one of the things I worry about in this new digital world, since I'm getting older, is that I won't keep up, but don't know enough to keep up. But what I, what I worry about is the lack of, we do so much online with texting and email, that we lose interpersonal, the ability for interpersonal relationships to communicate to each other. I mean, really communicate. And that's why, you know, I try, you know, when, in my own life, I try and meet people face-to-face anymore. I mean, email's fine for quick in-and-outs, you know, and things like that, but I try and sit with people because it gives, it's kind of a reminder to me that, you know, there's a, there's a world beyond the digital world. And it's an important world that we have because, you know, if we, if we lose the, the ability to relate to each other, you know, we lose a great deal. And I, I think that, you know, I can't thank you enough for just, you know, those simple little things like a handshake and, and eye contact. They're very, they're, they may seem like small little things, but in the overall scheme of where society seems to be going, they're big things. They're big things. And so, and I know your concept, and Jeff Glass has explained it to me, you know, the idea of creating a culture of entrepreneurship is really a way of looking at life. And I, one of your students actually, you know, I think the last comment accurately said it. And if we could develop that, you know, in, in this community, and I think, you know, we're on the road to doing that. These are, these, it's like going to the moon. You, you can't get there overnight. You gotta just take baby steps and work. And that's why, you know, when we speak some numbers, you know, we've got 27 graduates. Well, you know, 20, people are going to look and say, 27, you know, that's not very many. What are you doing? Come on. Well, these things, these things take time to germinate and they take time to, to get a hold of. And we can't lose sight of that. And that's one of the reasons why I think that evenings like tonight, you know, we may not be making the biggest decisions in the world in, in, you know, at joint meetings, but what we're doing is we're communicating with each other. We're communicating with our community. And that's what we need to do. We need to keep that emphasis. We need to show that, you know, we're, we're, we want a community where people have the ability to critically think and think how to make their life better and in turn, make our community a better place to live. And so I'm going to repeat it, you know, I know your foundation documents say Carson City, and I'm going to hold you to that, so don't go anywhere else.
Maya, I just, you know, I can't say enough good things about what you and Jeff and Rob have done in a relatively short period of time. And let me, you know, by way of comfort, there were 75 that originally were part of the after-school club. There were conflicts with track and baseball, or I think we would have had probably all, all 75 at this time. I took the opportunity to sit in a couple of the sessions because I wanted to see what this was about. Was it all males? You know, I, I wanted to see the demographics, and it was a reflection of our community. Male, female, ethnicity, it was a reflection of Carson City. All of these kids were engaged. I, and talk about handshakes, I just sat in the back watching. And two of the, the students came up, they, you know, put their hand out to shake my hand, and they were, you talk about being engaged. So I asked them, I said, "Why is this so important to you?" And it's be, and they said, "It's because we can use it today and tomorrow." They, it's already in place of these graduates. This community is already in a state of change, just because of what has happened. And I too would echo what you said. Stay here. Let's, let's bring Carson City all the way and raise the bar really high all the way through. Give these kids a reason. Your last bullet point, after this, they understood why they were taking other classes. Why are we in school? Steve Reynolds always asks the questions, do kids even know about the value of education? You're giving them that. And it's, it's been demonstrated really, really well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate what you said. I do want to say that we did start out with 75 students. We graduated 27. Some did drop out because of conflicts. Some dropped out because we bumped our knees a little bit. We, in our, in our third week, we lost some students in our first two weeks. In our third week, we got really real with the students and had a sit-down and talked to them about what they wanted to get out of this program, and they were very authentic with us. So we, we changed directions, we pivoted. We're entrepreneurs. We know how to do that. We pivoted and we kept the program going and we ended successfully. But that's the whole point of a pilot. We are going to bump our knees, we're going to make mistakes, but we're going to keep going too.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I'd like to next invite Mr. Mike Jackson, who is the President of Micro Manipulator. And just in brief introducing Mr. Jackson and also Mr. Glass, these gentlemen were at our school so much that staff members thought they were on the payroll. So we were very fortunate to have them helping us.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. What I wanted to do tonight was tell you a little bit about a, where we're at with the program that we've been developing for some time in the Carson City Schools Foundation. It now has a name. It's the Business and Education Successful Together Program, the BEST Program. What it is designed to do, right from the start, we thought about connecting businesses and classrooms, individual classrooms, at the K through 12th grade level, even at the elementary level, to provide information on, to the instructors, to the teachers, on how their curriculum that they were teaching, their lessons plan, could be seen in the workforce, the relevancy of those work plans, and also to provide information to those teachers that might help them understand what they are teaching even better because of how it is actually being used every day in the workforce. And then also to expose the students to the opportunities that exist right here in Carson City in the workplace, to give them an idea of just what it is that they're learning now and how that's going to be applied and why that's important, and open their eyes into the different possible things that they might be able to pursue, and provide a path for them, or at least maybe an idea that they can continue on into the multitude of programs that are being developed from the high school level on through the university level. Those level, those programs, as I mentioned last time, were, are in the idea of developing a workforce for very short-term use for businesses, so that the businesses have a employee that they can employ right away that gets trained. What this program, the BEST Program, is doing is taking maybe a longer-term idea and starting much sooner with the idea that these students would eventually be employees to the business community sometime 10, 15 years from now. So if you will, kind of filling the pipeline. The class gets, and the teacher gets a content mentor in terms, in the business, in the business representative. The business, on the other hand, gets a reward because they have potential employees for the long term. And they also get some exposure to the community, which is frankly, as I mentioned last time, very useful in a very quiet way, a very simple way, a very low-key way, but by word of mouth, that's very powerful to the individual businesses. I have, in your packet, I believe you have a flyer that describes the program and describes some of the ideas and some of the benefits and activities that can happen in the program. This program has been in concept phase for some time. We have three businesses that have agreed to be the pilot businesses, if you will, to work with the classrooms and work out some of the bugs in getting this program going. But we were a little bit stuck on making the connection into the schools. Fortunately, Mr. Stokes arranged for me to present at a seminar, developing the curriculum for the Next Generation Science Standards. I was able to present about this program. And as a result, we have 15 teachers from the elementary schools that have exhibited their interest and have sent out their information, saying, "We really want to participate in this program." I have met with two of them, Gina Hoppy and Genevieve Christie. They came to Micro Manipulator. We walked around, I showed them our products, I showed them what we do every day. And then we spent about an hour brainstorming on how the different things that we do could be applied within their lesson plans. And we covered everything from the idea of how you can structure written communications and that, how they have to flow in a correct order, otherwise you can't build a manipulator the right way. We talked about things like how you have to interact all around the world with different cultures and therefore it's very important to be clear in your communications. And we even talked about some things, how the work that we do at Micro Manipulator could be used to illustrate things like the translation of circular motion into linear motion, and to illustrate different unit systems metric to English and how that's translated and give an actual feel of just what the different sizes look like in the different units. And we talked even about the idea of how we could present in a manipulator, a physical device that represented movement in X and Y axes, and then took the concept of X and Y axes into reality and showed the students what that meant in the real world. Those are some of the things that we can do by working together with these instructors and these teachers, and, which is really what is behind the program, the idea behind the program. So I will be meeting with the other teachers who have expressed an interest. We do want to start off the program small with a pilot program, a few classrooms, in order to work out the bugs and then take it to the other businesses and try to expand it within the school district as well. We will meet before the start of the school year, go over the lesson plan, and see just how we can go ahead and implement this with real-time subjects and, and actual activities. So it's nice to be going from the concept phase into the actual implementation phase on this particular project. Micro Manipulator will provide the administrative support for the companies developing newsletters. And I think you have in your packet also an example of the kind of things that can have in it. This is a newsletter that Micro Manipulator would put out, for instance. In those newsletters, they are designed to make the connection between the business and the classroom instruction. As you can see, this talks about things that are important in the business in terms of math and English, art, that sort of thing. And then, of course, even where the business gets a little bit of word-of-mouth advantage by putting some information in there about needing a new employee, maybe an uncle or a father, or somebody might be interested in applying. It discusses that it's the job and what is important to the job in terms of what that student is working with on a day-to-day basis. In this case, in this example, it's the idea that it's important to read and follow directions. Okay? So Micro Manipulator will provide that administrative support so that it makes it easier on the businesses. So that's where we're at with it. We are moving into the implementation phase. Once we get through the pilot, have a few months under our belt and know how this is going to work out, we'll take it to the other businesses and expand it within the school district as well. So I'm very excited about it, coming to fruition, actually starting out, getting something done here and actually working with this. And the teachers seem excited too. It's just a pleasure to have them at Micro Manipulator and spend the time doing what we did, to look at what we did at Micro Manipulator and what they're doing with the children and trying to make the two mesh together. So that's where we're at. I'll take any questions.
Questions, comments?
Well, Mike, I, I can't say enough good things about what you're doing. This is, this is truly raising the level of student achievement and success in life. But what you said, the biggest and probably the best thing, is teachers and business meeting each other, talking to each other with a goal of helping that student in an applied sense, in the academic sense. This is changing education, you know, forever, the way it's been done in Carson City. We're taking what's the very best of our teachers, putting it together with the very best in business, and who benefits these kids do? And when the kids benefit and their successful businesses benefit, the whole community benefits. And we're just coming up together. So thank you for staying with us and, and not letting go.
Moving on to agenda item number seven. It's the informational update on the Manufacturing Technician, the MT-1 program at the Carson City Library and Western Nevada College and its integration in the Jump Start Program. Sina and Emily.
Sina Lloyd, Library Director, for the record. I just want to start out with saying, yes, indeed, the library will have a 3D printer. It is for our MT-1 program, as well as something that we're not necessarily talking, here to talk about tonight, but I'll briefly mention, which is our Minecraft program that will start at the, it's beginning of the school year focused on middle school students. And that will give them the ability to essentially build something in Minecraft, a game that they love to play, but then get to print it on a 3D printer and see why it's important for them to understand 3D spatial recognition and all of those pieces. So that's what they'll be doing this summer. They'll have build-a-thons and then they'll get to print their items. So with that, I just jumping into it. The Manufacturing Technician 1 is through the Manufacturing Skills Institute and through a grant that was provided by the Library Services Technology Act through our state library. We were able to work with Western Nevada College to offer this opportunity for our community. Now, this also includes the Carson City School District. Jump Start students will have the opportunity through WNC to participate in the classes that have the MT-1. And I'll let Emily talk about that just a bit.
Emily Howorth, Western Nevada College. Our Jump Start students are starting in the fall with the opportunity to be prepared to take the MT-1 credentialing exam. It's a nationally recognized certification with three large areas of study encompassing a variety of manufacturing angles. And included with the coursework will be a lot of hands-on activities that we'll continue to talk about a little further tonight. But the, the partnership between the library and Western Nevada College is, has provided this opportunity and this, this foundation work that we're going to grow both the Jump Start program and the patronage of the library's opportunities to be able to take the MT-1 credentialing exam.
And so the library itself will focus on veterans and women, and will have opportunities for students to come in, in a less organized fashion, to work on the curriculum that the MT-1 provides, and then take those certification tests and become certified and ready to go out into the workforce. So again, this is just, this is GOED, Nevada's Governor's Office of Economic Development. One of their benchmarks is increasing opportunities through education and workforce development. And that is something that we're hoping we're going to be able to essentially meet with this program. GOED has taken funding that they GOED has taken funding that they have available, and Washoe County Library will be participating in this, up in Washoe. And it's really exciting to see that libraries are having a place in this conversation as well. So, library cards for all. With WNC, CCSD, and the Carson City Library, we have a plethora of resources available to share. One of those is a 3D printer that will be coming as of July 1st. Other items include Lynda.com, Lynda Library, which I'll show you a little bit about. It's exciting because it not only provides individuals in the library, because it's authenticated by their library barcode number, but I see it as providing our entire community with opportunities to not only learn more digital literacy skills, maybe it's how to use Microsoft Office, but they also have tutorials on SolidWorks, which is a 3D modeling software. So we'll also be sharing lab supplies. We will be able to purchase those with the grant, and we'll be sharing back and forth so that we're using our resources wisely. And we've also expanded our hours at the library, in the sense that we are now open on Sundays. So we're open seven days a week, giving everyone in the community the opportunity to come into the space without any additional budget. And then, which is, which is great and fully possible, but it, I mean, we were able to do it, and I think that that's important, to show the community that we are working to find the best way to use our community resources. And I do thank the Carson City Board of Supervisors in that area for helping, not only with the Digitarium, but kind of having us come up with different solutions. We're thinking outside of the box, kind of thinking like entrepreneurs, and seeing how this is going to work. And then we'll also be cross-locating staff. So, WNC will have a teaching assistant, we will have a test proctor, and the test proctor has to be registered, make sure there's no cheating or any of that involved, but we'll be able to cross-locate staff into the two locations. So then, the resource that I'm going to talk about today, the library has many resources that we can share with the community, but it is Lynda.com, and I'm just going to show you, it's a very brief clip.
Hi, I'm Gabriel Corbett, and welcome to SolidWorks 2014 Essential Training. SolidWorks is the world leader in 3D modeling software, used for product design and development. In this course, we'll look at the methods and tools for creating manufacturing-ready parts and assemblies, along with detailed drawings and bills of materials. We'll start with the basic sketch tools to create two-dimensional sketches that will become the foundation of 3D objects. Next, we'll look at modeling 3D features by extruding or evolving sketches into 3D parts, followed by creating more complex objects using the sweep and loft tools.
Okay, and that is going to be able to be provided to us through our library board of trustees, as well as the friends of the Carson City Library. And it is something that we've had in the past, but it's been limited to the IP address, so limited to our building. With, with this next upcoming year, July 1st, you'll be able to access it with your library card at home, or wherever you might be to be on the Internet, so.
So, as a veteran and a woman, I'd like to tell you how exciting it is to be right here, right now, doing this. A lot of the collaboration that we've mentioned so far includes SolidWorks, which is the software program, and we'll be teaching that at the college, as well as teaching it at the library, so that students can go to the library when the library's open, and go to the college when they're in class, and vice versa. So we're looking for every opportunity to share people, resources, facilities, time, energy, to really make things available for the community, both for someone that considers themselves a traditional college student, or a non-traditional college student, or just a member of the community who really wants to up their game. We're also having a 3D printer coming into the college before the semester start in August. So again, we're tag-teaming to make sure we're having the resources available for the community. Minecraft is available in my classrooms as well, for 3D modeling and simulation for students. Sometimes you have to pull me off of that thing, too, it's kind of fun. But what I want to show you briefly are some photographs of the equipment that we're bringing in for this fall. We have a great foundational program right now, and we've, we've secured some grant funding through the Department of Labor to expand our equipment offerings, and this is an example of one, and it looks like quite a jumble there, but that's a table-sized, banquet-table-sized piece of equipment that represents a full production line. It's got pneumatics on it, it's got motors, conveyors, sorting, sensors, parts and supplies, movements, sorting, and counting equipment. It's all controlled by a computer, which has to be programmed. There's a human interface device, which is a separate pad that has to be pulled away. So this is an opportunity for students to work in small groups, individually, to be working out of sight from each other, to work on a full system. This is a really great capstone sort of opportunity in the manufacturing program, and I wanted to be sure you had a look at it, and please know that you're going to be invited to come visit it in action with hands-on in the classroom as well. Here's another set of equipment that's coming in. These are three separate pieces. There's a conveyor piece, a stacking piece, and a sorter piece, and those are three individual pieces of hardware that can teach, again, fundamental concepts in the manufacturing plant. Doesn't matter what's being made, whether it's a food item, or an automotive item, or a plastic, or a metal. These types of systems are in use at a variety of different plants. So what's great about this system is that there's three pieces, they're individual, they can be worked, programmed from a computer individually, operated individually. The three can be connected together to make a more fully functional system, and the best part of all is that they each come in a large carrying case. They're portable, they're ready to go. So, fair warning, I'm going to be showcasing in the schools and doing all the outreach that's available in this community, yes. So all of the partnerships and the opportunities that we've heard about tonight, this is going to be another piece of that, continue to be another piece of that. So watch for the mech lab coming your way. I teach robotics from the, from the small handheld models, to enforce things like sensors, which would be looking for obstacles using infrared, or light, or sound, or touch, a variety of different sensors, which again, are used in a variety of different applications in the manufacturing, or production, or distribution environments. Coding is involved. So the Lynda.com presentation that we just saw, one of the offerings the library's making available to us, is a huge part of this, allowing students many opportunities to learn different coding techniques. So both of these robots are coded on the computer, built by hand, and then monitored and tested and checked. Are they doing what we expect them to do? Is this, is this the result we're looking for? So really great teaching opportunities in a small handheld-sized robot. And I was thinking about these today, what, one of the things that makes these small robots so important for a student, is that it's a very private experience, it's a very small piece of equipment, so the student doesn't feel like they're exposed as they're trying things, you know? Maybe that didn't work the way I thought it would work, well, it's right here on the table next to me, or on the floor, and I can work on that and get it, get it the way I want it before I have to share it with a partner, or share it to the class. So this is a great place to start in robotics. And this is my personal favorite of all the things that are coming in, this is a Kuka, an industrial robot. These are the robots that are in the large industrial plants, and they can work solo, as an independent device, for what we call picking and placing, putting things in place, and moving them around, to reduce manual tasks that an employee might have to do. And what that ups the game for the employee into is a programming, a coding, and operational perspective. So, the, the job description for the robot operator now involves safety, and control, and programming, and maybe a little pneumatics, hydraulics, a little repair, a little what we call recommissioning, to move the robot to a different job or a different position. So, yes, robots take away jobs, but yes, they bring new and better jobs along the line as well. And I have just some brief shots of some additional training panels, just so you know, we've got just tons of hands-on opportunities, and, and you're going to see students, you're going to see the photos, you're going to hear the stories of the, the systems that we're building. These are all safe, low-voltage systems, so that we can experiment, and try, and practice, and test, and what happens if I do this, and what happens if I don't do that? And it's really a, a great opportunity for Western, and we're very fortunate to be adding these pieces of equipment for the manufacturing program, starting this fall. Looks like I put four total in there, so there they are. I'm sure those details are, at, at this point in the meeting, are lost on all of us, that there's motors, there's controls, there's all sorts of programmable controllers in there, but the bottom line is, these are hands-on experiences for students. So as, you probably have a feel for the fact that when I get talking, I can really talk. So the lecture experiences are there as well, but the hands-on experiences are the most important part of the coursework.
We want to make Carson proud, and we want to build a community of learners. And to do that, we're also going to support those learners at WNC, at the library, in this program. And to do that, we're going to use Skype and GoToTraining session support, so that students don't feel left out. They do feel like maybe they can, you know, they're, they're taking the program at WNC, but they might want to share some, some experiences with those that are doing what they're doing at the library, so it gives us that opportunity. We also will have guest speakers from the field, in both locations, at the library and at WNC, and some kind of wow items with a 3D printer, and what you can really do with SolidWorks and some of those different tools. We'll have tours of local manufacturer facilities as well, resume and interview workshops, because that is just as important as knowing the skill, is being able to present yourself and the skill that you know. And then, national career readiness certification.
We want you to know, our focus on the Carson City, Carson Valley manufacturing base, the need for qualified candidates, and raising standards of employment with credentials and training throughout the community will drive local success.
And the program, and the program does begin July 1st, the grant cycle, and then the selection in classes start mid-August. And the selection is, we do have a total between WNC and the library of 60 scholarships to take this manufacturing, essentially certification, but other students can participate as well. It is $300 to do that, but we will be offering, at least at the library, the classes for free, so that if they want to build their skills that way, they can.
Brett?
Will the certification program be connected to a job placement program as well?
We've just completed a grant application that involves apprenticeships and internships that we hope to tag on, if approved, that we hope to tag on, to be able to place some students. It doesn't directly have a connection, but we have a sense through our interactions with the community, that we will be able to have those agreements in place, that the employers will say, "Let me see those first five candidates," and, and give them an interview for an open position. That's something that would be extremely valuable for us to have in our pockets to offer the students.
Chuck?
For the record, I'm Shepard, President of WNC. I'd just like to expand on that, because we are doing a lot with placement beyond just this program. With the latest Department of Labor grant, we're partnering with Dieter with a product called Burning Glass, which is a state-of-the-art, that will identify job requirements, training requirements, as well as jobs from every major job bank in the whole country. And so, with partnering with Dieter, we're going to both bring people into the program that need training, as well as help them identify where the jobs are, and prepare them to go out and be ready to fill those jobs. So we're really excited about this. It's really, it's statewide, it's not just Western, but Frank Woodbeck, who is the former director of Dieter, is leading this program, and it's got a lot of potential.
Before we go, oh, go ahead, Mayor. Two people that want to speak to the WNC, Carson High School Jump Start Collaboration, part of what Emily, what we're talking about, and maybe if we could have them come to the table, then we could take off from there, and that's Cheryl and Morgan Tingle. Sina, don't go too far away.
My name is Cheryl Tingle. I'm a parent of a Carson High School student, and also the parent of a Western Nevada College student. And I just wanted to let you guys know how valuable the Jump Start program has been to our family. My daughter was able to go to classes, which cost us a fraction of what normal college classes would have cost us, as well as the books being furnished, which we've started looking at books for nursing for her now, and we're blown away by the pricing. So it was just a huge cost savings to us, and a great opportunity for Morgan. It's been wonderful working with Mr. Stokes, working with Jose Delphin, working with Su Kima at the college. John Kankila has been wonderful to work with. I think they've made it very easy for all the students. Her boyfriend is down in Douglas, I know he was part of the Jump Start program there. It's been wonderful for him to get ahead with his college credits also. So I'll let Morgan tell you a little bit.
I would recommend this program to anyone, it's been a...
Just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Morgan Tingle, and I was part of the Jump Start program, and I would recommend it to anyone. It was a great experience, and it was a wonderful way to ease into college with a support system, because they want you to succeed, so if you had questions or needed help with anything, they had a TA that was there to advise you. And it's a great way to get students thinking ahead and about the future with everything.
Thank you.
Through the program, Morgan was actually, and through her own initiative and through AP classes, she has 36 college credits as of right now. She completed her nursing prerequisites, and was just accepted this week, last week, into the nursing program at WNC. So, in essence, it helped and allowed her to skip a year ahead. She's got that year of prereqs done, and is jumping right into the nursing program. So it's been wonderful for us. If I can also add a couple things to that, Digitarium, going kind of back to that, it's wonderful as far as the career assessment, both of my daughters have taken that. She has also recommended it to a friend who doesn't get a lot of guidance at home and a lot of direction, and I believe it has helped him with that career assessment also. And I want you to know, the school counselors do recommend it to the students, because they've actually given me the website before, for my daughters, when I've been speaking to them, so that's been great. And then regarding National History Day, my other daughter was there, she was one of the participants in it. I believe it was 11 students who actually went with Nicole Fagundis. Nicole Fagundis was only home for about three days, and then had to hop on another plane, I think it was Japan, she got a trip to for some reason, for teaching, experience, something affiliated with that. And it's my understanding, none of the students did place in Washington DC, but they had a wonderful trip. One of the girls, Kaylee Gordon, wrote an extra essay, basically, and this essay won her a trip, she won, and she has won a trip, I believe it's a World War II museum opening in New Orleans in December, and she won a trip for two, based on her essay she had written. So I just want you to know, there's a lot of value in these programs in Carson City. So, thank you guys all for supporting it all.
Well, thank you, that's great.
That's amazing. Thanks.
I think it's what Joe said, when everybody comes together, a lot of good things happen, and a lot of good things happen for the students.
It's good to hear from somebody who's a parent and a child who's been through it. I mean, that's some pretty valuable information. Kind of, I think what it says is, we're on the right track.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And you don't have to stay up, but I, I think from what I heard from Molly, and what I'm hearing from Cheryl and Morgan, like, like you just said, Mayor, getting kind of that, that hands-on input from these people is really important. You know, we, our input's valuable, our input's important, but when we can hear straight from the people involved in these programs, the students, that this is what they're getting out of it, this is what they want to get out of it, I think that's invaluable. I mean, I mean, you got to hit the ground and talk to the people who this really is going to initially benefit, and we're doing that, and I think we have to keep on doing that. And I, I thank you guys for doing it at your level, and what I want to see, as we go forward, is finding mechanisms to help you reach the younger students, you know, the, the elementary-level kids, and so that by the time they get... kids, and so that by the time they get to high school and have all these exciting opportunities presented to them, they maybe already know about them. And if we can find a way to help you do that, then I'm interested in seeing how we get there.
One of the barriers that students feel to entering college is comfort, and Western has a great reputation for getting out and meeting folks and letting young people get to know us, get to know the professors, get to know our president, get to know our student government, so that when it is their time to come up, they feel comfortable, they feel like they've been there, they kind of know somebody on the team, that sort of thing. And you know already that the library is that sort of place for our children, so these collaboration-type efforts really expand on that. We're looking for local community growth and success, and these are some of the fibers that hold all that together.
And then just briefly to comment on that as well, we at the library do also see a lot of students who might not have parents who are helping them at home. And so we do take every opportunity that we can to teach them about what resources are available and introduce them to the people who kind of hold those keys and make them feel more comfortable in moving on with their lives, too.
Additional comments, questions? Go ahead, Mayor.
You know, Sina, and to the college and to the Adams Hub, I've had the good fortune of spending some time with Dr. Myrtle Gotham at Vice President of Innovation and Research at UNR. And pretty exciting guy about what's going on in the world and what the university's doing and how they're interfacing with their innovation lab in downtown Reno. But what, you know, what you should know is, one of the first words out of his mouth is, "I know what your library's doing." And that's, and I know what the Adams Hub is doing. That's some great stuff. So, you know, keep it up because they want, you know, the university's offering, you know, its help as well. I know the college is doing it, the university's down here researching, reaching out, they know what you're doing. And so, you know, as Maya said, you know, the word's getting out. Just keep the enthusiasm and the energy going behind it, so you should know that. Thanks.
Questions, comments?
Steve.
Steve.
And this is kind of in general, but, you know, as listening to everyone, I'm really struck by the comparison now with what's going on, what we have. I mean, you know, we've got a grip on a pretty good thing here. And what's really helped me realize that is comparisons to when I first got to Carson. And some of you will remember, I know Mr. Bacon will remember, but Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce here had an education committee back then, and there were a lot of the manufacturers at the time that were part of that. And there was a strong commitment at that time from those manufacturers that they wanted to be part of education in the community. We got some federal money for a program called Schools to Careers, and some of those same bones that were used then, you know, we're talking about now, busing students to businesses so they could find out how businesses ran. You know, there were several other things that involved the coordination of education in the business community. None of that really came together as well as it possibly could have. Some of it was because the economy was going gung ho and a high school student could quit school at 16 and go frame houses and make more money than, you know, a lot of people are making now in pretty good jobs. I don't think the school district, from an outside perspective, I don't think the school district and the things they were concerned about, such as no child left behind and, you know, other things going on, were in a position where they could welcome the outside interests into the schools as well as we can now. And it's actually kind of surprising how all of these things have kind of come together at this point. We have, even during a time when the schools are having to change how we teach with Common Core standards and technology and teacher evaluations that are going to become much more demanding, and yet we're on, at least in Carson City, I think in many other counties, in Carson City, you know, everybody's on the same team when it comes to the school district at this time. You know, we're not fighting or having too many arguments among ourselves about our capability of working for the students. We see things like the Adams Hub and those opportunities at this time. We see WNC and their capabilities, the library and their capabilities. You know, we're in a unique position now, and I guess in looking back at some of the things that have been done, some of the things that have been tried, you know, what just strikes me is, you know, we need to make the most we can of these resources and these bridges that we've built while they're here, because our world can change again and we can find different things. But, you know, how fast can we get a lot of these things put together to benefit most, if not all, of the students that we have? And I just, you know, the more you've heard tonight, it makes you excited, it should make all of us excited, but that comparison to how things maybe didn't work so well in the past, but how much more resources we have working together now, I, you know, we've got an opportunity that may be unmatched at any time in Carson City's history and maybe in the future. So just something I wanted to share my opinion on.
Thank you, Steve. Other questions, comments? Well, Sina and Emily, this is going to be exciting going forward on the MT-1. You know, I, for one, would just like to come down and take a look at, and the 3D printer.
I think you should see the 3D printer.
And for Cheryl, Emily, after the one tour of your lab, I'm going to go down there in the fall semester to watch that unfold. That's pretty exciting. So thank you, both of you, so very much for all you've done for our students and this community, and for Mr. Burton there at WNC. I mean, this is, everything is good. Like Steve said, it's all coming together and we just keep it going. So thank you.
And thank you all for helping us provide those opportunities.
Okay, if there's no further questions, then we've got, this is time for public comment. Just, Mr. Bacon.
Thank you. For the record, Ray Bacon, Nevada Manufacturers Association. I have to correct Steve, the School of Careers program was during the Clinton administration, which was before we even got started with No Child Left Behind. So I hate to date you, but that's the reality of the situation. And I wound up being the state chair of the School of Careers thing, and it was, it was a nightmare of regulations, a lot of which were federal, that kept us from doing a whole bunch of things. But we did have good engagement from the employment community, but it just, the state, per se, especially in Clark County, was not ready. And I'm not even sure this community was ready at that point in time. Let me touch base on a few things that you've covered tonight because I think there's some enhancements that will give you some encouragement. The Burning Glass thing that Chet mentioned is bigger than what he mentioned, and let me tell you what it does. It grabs a hold of all the current databases and pulls them into a separate place. It goes through and sorts them so that you can see what the real jobs are that are available in the Carson City area, in Reno, in Douglas County, and in this whole region, because you're preparing kids for the region. Your kids are going to, hopefully, if you do this right, your kids are going to be the leaders of the region. Why is that important? Because most of you are old enough that you want to keep your grandchildren close. You're not care too much about the kids, but you want the grandkids close. So that's really important. And we, for a long period of time, have been exporting a good portion of our kids out of this whole state, our engineering graduates and things like that. We've got engineering positions open and 60% of our engineering graduates leave the state. That's nuts. That's just wrong somehow. We're not making that connection. So that's what the Burning Glass thing will do. The other thing that's really important to remember with what Mia's doing with the entrepreneurship program is about 90% of the kids that are going to graduate from your schools are going to wind up with multiple careers, and probably 80% to 85% of those kids are going to wind up doing a job in their working career that we don't even know what it is yet. Now, I'll give you a number that'll put things in perspective. The Tesla project just makes a lot of noise, and you're going to wind up with kids that are going to get jobs there, regardless of whether you want to or not, that's going to happen. When they get up to the point where, just for the automotive, if they get up to the point where they're selling a half million cars a year, and I'm sure that GM, Ford, Mercedes, Chrysler, Honda, Toyota are willingly going to give up that market share to those guys. So that'll be a challenge. A half million cars a year gets to the point where Panasonic has to produce 8.2 million batteries a day, every day, 365 days a year. You don't do a lot of hand-holding and personal touching of every single battery when you're making 8.2 million a day. Does that put things in perspective? The automation that Emily is talking about is going to be nuts in that place. People are not going to touch the parts. So that manual production stuff that most of us grew up with, that I managed and ran at Bentley in my youth, those days are gone. So this is going to be an automation of plant. Now, the way that that plant is set up to run, it's going to have multiple production lines parallel. It's going to start at one end, making batteries at the other end, it's going to be in battery packs, and they get loaded into a truck. They will do multiple production lines as they open buildings. One of the things that Story County has done, which is kind of challenging, is for most jurisdictions, is Story County has said, when you finish the 200, the first 250-foot wide strip, you can put a plastic wall up while you're building the next three more 250-foot wide strips, 250 feet by 5,000 feet, put in your first production lines, have a plastic wall on that end and be fully operational with a CVO to go ahead and operate. So they will be building production lines for the next couple of years. The first ones will be functional. Their plan right now is, as they get to the point where they get to the end and they're working on the last one, they will take everything that they've learned each step of the way, and they will improve each one as it goes. So they look at about a five-year process that that thing will be steadily gaining productivity. That's scary. And it may take only a couple of cycles to go through before they get that plant at optimum capacity. So that's just for the car. The battery packs, don't know what that's going to add. Why the battery packs? Relatively straightforward. Mr. Crowe knows a little bit about electronics, I know that from the past. Okay. If I'm plugging in my car, my Tesla or any other electric car, into a wall plug into a trickle charger, it takes five hours to charge. If I've got this battery that's been charged by my roof stuff or by my, by whatever means, on overnight power, and that thing is just like a giant capacitor, so when I plug in my car, I can recharge my car in probably 20 minutes. Now, let me see, free power and I can charge my car in 20 minutes, or I can wait five hours, and then discover in the morning that I forgot to plug in my car the night when I came in. I think that decision's going to be pretty quick. So that's what we're on the edge of. I don't know whether Tesla's going to be successful or not, but the battery packs and those things are going to wind up being successful because of what they do for multiple purposes. I asked John to say, because one of the things that I think this community can do is a vision of mine from 25 years ago. The one section of the newspaper that is read by more people than anybody else is the largest section of the newspaper. It's the sports section. Put the school box scores in the sports section, right smack in the middle of them, for multiple reasons. Number one, it's the most read section. Number two, that's where they belong, because half of the sports in there are about the school sports anyway. So what's wrong with putting the honor roll listed in the sports section? Nothing, absolutely nothing. And it will get read, and it will get attention. And it may get more attention than you're getting now. So, because nobody looks at the front page anymore, that's what we heard on the radio this morning, so.
Maybe we ought to put Board of Supervisors' agendas in the sports section. For more than one reason.
Start with the kids first. Start with the kids first, then maybe somebody else will read. One of the problems which exist in some of the other places, let's just, I don't like to bring in Clark County, but it's important to bring in a particular situation, because you're not there yet, but hopefully you get to the point where it becomes a challenge. Southwest CTA is probably the most successful career and technical academy in Southern Nevada. It has 380 kids per class. Last year's, last fall's applications were 3,300 to get into that school. So that means they're only off on capacity by eight to one. That's close. In Clark County, that's a life-changing experience. The kids that come out of that school all have jobs, all go on to post-secondary, a large portion of them go on to post-secondary. They're out there on the same track that you're creating. But out of 330,000 kids in the school district, you've got seven CTEAs out of 52 high schools. So the kid's entire life is fundamentally decided in a lottery. Lottery is not good enough to fund our schools in this state, but it's good enough to screw them for the rest of their lives. Think about that for just a few seconds. I hope you get to the point where you have to go to a lottery for the kids that are getting in. But as you take a look at this thing, what you're doing is a community effort with everybody engaged here, is an opportunity to make sure that you maintain the capacity that you need. And it's going to be a challenge. It's going to be a significant challenge. But you don't want to get to where Clark County is. Now, it's not quite as bad as that, because the kids are actually allowed to make, I think it's three choices in Clark County. But I'm sorry, if it's still, you're still rejecting a whole bunch of kids. And down there, if you don't get in, you probably don't get successful. The other thing that, your 3D printer is an interesting thing, because I learned something in the last two weeks that I found fascinating that you'll find a little bit on the scary side. Chemistry is now involved in 3D printing, because there are new printing inks that are going to come out for 3D printings that are going to require that the 3D printer be totally encased in a human hood, because we're talking new stuff that's going to be harder and better, that's going to make things almost like metal. But in the process of doing that, it's got some fairly nasty exhaust and things like that. So that's what's going to come. So you're going to wind up with, the cycle of what you're doing right now is going to constantly change, and that's going to be a challenge, because money's always going to be short, there's never going to be enough, and it's going to be, how do we figure out what the best bang for the buck is? And quite frankly, you've got people that are doing a great job. There is no other community in the western states that I can find that is doing what you're doing, of having the government sector meeting with the education sector. I can't find one in California, and I looked a couple of times. Now, when you get back east, you have school districts that are a subsection of the local governments that take place, and so in those cases, it actually does happen. But I can't find one in the western states. So what you're doing is important, you're to be rewarded for what you're doing. Chat was not treated well during the last legislative session, you already know that. But if you can have some screaming successes in the next two years, maybe we can churn that around during the next session. We got a lot of money for CTE, and we know how that happened, but they don't necessarily need to know. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Any questions, comments for Ray? Any other public comment?
Okay. We're going to go, this is, in six more months, we're going to have another meeting, right?
Right. Yes.
I do have one comment. I was just texted a link to an article that says, "Northern Nevada tops the list for shippers in advanced manufacturing interested in returning to or expanding existing facilities in the United States," according to a recent study from a national site-selection firm. So that just goes to prove that the steps that we're taking here are working.
Well, before we adjourn, I just want to thank the community and thank all of the Board of Supervisors. This is great, you know, just getting together, and for a common purpose. And the trustees, school trustees, we're all going down the same road, and it's exciting to be part of this. So with that, I don't even, won't call for a motion to adjourn, we will just adjourn.
Adjourn.
Okay.